Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to tonight's special Aronikoi Planning Board public hearing. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to the left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. There's only one item on the agenda tonight. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give your address, and present the case. Planning Board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. This case is a public hearing, so it will be open to public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the Board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the Board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the Board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. Michelle, will you please call the first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number PB 1804-1, upon the matter of request by I-Square LLC for amendment to revise site plan approval associated with the I-Square development located on premises 404 and 401 Bakers Park, 667775 and 795 Titus Avenue, and 5051 6061, 7181 Lorraine Drive in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, Board. Mike Nolan, I-Square with offices at 400 Bakers Park in Aronikoi. I'm here tonight to request that you vote to eliminate two of the 10 conditions that were put on the approval that was granted to us at last month's special board meeting. During your deliberations, there were numerous untrue, inaccurate, or ill-informed statements made by a number of the Board members. This misinformation led to two of the conditions that were added to our approval that we're asking you to remove tonight. The first condition we'd like to eliminate is the parking lot, I'm sorry, is, the condition is, eliminate the parking lot shown at the southwest corner of Titus-Bakers Park-Cooper Road intersection for green space. The first obvious questions are, is if you had, and I found you did later here with a letter from LaBella, but did you consult an engineer, a site design professional? Did you speak with any of the local business owners? We did. Have you ever been involved in event planning at I-Square or observed the parking needs of the area businesses during their peak times? Have you been there to see a full parking lot and a half-empty dining room? We have. The inaccuracies or misinformation that came up during your deliberation, we were not allowed to object to at the time. Therefore, we had to sit and watch it happen and watch you vote, considering that same information. It was presented that the Imaginarium closes at 4:00. That's not correct. The Arts and Science Center within the Imaginarium closes at 4:00 daily, primarily to make sure that our dining patrons and paying customers have room to park. The Eco Gym is open until 7:30 or 8:30, depending on the nights, four nights a week. The facility is available for rent for events up to 11:00 PM. And the rooftop kitchen and bar, which will be open approximately six months a year, operates till 11:00 PM. So not considering the parking needs of the Imaginarium during all hours of the day is not appropriate. Use of the traffic analysis and comparing it to parking needs and demands is not a practice that's used. LaBella restated that in their letter as well. And if you were to use that as a parking analysis, you'd take that same 227 trips during peak hours, then you'd have to multiply that times how many hours the patron is going to stay at I-Square. So if our average visitor is there for two hours, that would mean it wouldn't, we wouldn't need 227 parking spots, we'd need 554 parking spots. If they stayed for three hours, that would become 790 parking spots we would need. Do you see where I'm going with this? It's not a relevant method to use to calculate parking needs. Referring to the mixed-use parking requirement, or as it's stated in the code, as a minimum as a requirement, although the words made the same thing, they're different. It's stated as a minimum, it's stated as a minimum for a purpose. We don't want our success limited to a minimum. The mixed-use model has changed. Originally developed in the late '90s and incorporated into our code in 2004, the mixed-use commercial code considers a balance of businesses. Professional space, retail space, food, service, entertainment, all being blended within a small district. It makes perfect sense. Daytime businesses, more like the professional or services-type companies, use the parking lots during the day. The food, entertainment, and dining uses them more in the evenings, and it creates a good balance. But the mixed-use reality of time has changed since the late '90s. It's changed considerably. We've seen considerable decline in onsite retail business. The retail business has turned to a more online degree, and a large portion, although it'll never eliminate the need for stores and regular retail environment, that decline in retail onsite retail purchases creates a glut of capacity in the retail store world. We have all these stores that were built to handle 100% of our buying capacity not that long ago. Now 20 or 30% of that goes to be in online purchases, you have an access and retail demand. Nobody's going to invest the money to build retail stores today. Retail stores are good because their traffic is somewhat opposite of dining hours. When you take that out and add more, and the mix becomes more heavily integrated toward dining, entertainment, food service, all the businesses will peak and have demands in more similar times than they would if you had a balance. If you drive down Titus Avenue tonight, you'll find four "for lease" signs for office space. Office space is the other space that provides relief for parking that the other food, service, and entertainment businesses could use by having them in there. And we do have some office space, the I-Square offices, Edward Jones and that, but it accounts for a very small percentage of our space. And based on the mixed-use parking requirements, those offices actually use all the parking that would be allotted to them. However, we get a little, we pick up those seven or eight spots at night. But the gist of my point is that the mixed-use model and mixed-use parking code requirements truly aren't adequate. They aren't adequate for the business model that we see and we're growing into. The... One of the statements was made that it's okay to walk 300 feet to your car. Even the reference was made to high school students that have to do that possibly from class to class. Of course, that'd be the, if their two consecutive classes were at exact opposite ends of the school, that would be a worst-case scenario. However, that's outside the, or protected from the elements, and we're talking about 14- to 18-year-old kids, and certainly not representative of our clientele or the demographic of Aronikoids. We're comparing apples and oranges. It was stated that the House of Guitars owns the parking behind their building and on the west side of their building. In addition to that, the House of Guitars also owns a third of the parking lot you guys refer to as the I-Square parking lot. One-third of that, or 15 of the parking spots, belong to the House of Guitars and is owned by them and controlled by them. They shouldn't be included in our parking numbers as they were, and they would be otherwise occupied. House of Guitars is open till 10:00 at night. They have a heavy traffic hour of music school business between after-school hours right through the dinner hours. Certainly doesn't provide any relief for I-Square patrons. But to... It was also brought up that was said by two different Board members that when, and I'm quoting, "When we approved the parking lot at that corner, I was, you were under the impression that no more parking would be needed as part of our expanded project." That's inaccurate. We were not allowed to discuss our future expanded project when that parking lot was discussed, and we had no discussion of it whatsoever. Diane, you want to cover the parking?
Sure.
Diane's going to cover some facts with you about the parking in the mixed-use code and the realities at I-Square.
Good evening. My name is Diane Zachary, and I reside on Bellhurst Drive, and I am a contract administrator for the I-Square project. So I just wanted to review briefly some of the parking analysis we did to arrive at the spots that were proposed for the I-Square expanded site. The mixed-use district code for minimum parking accounts for all needs supposedly, maybe it did when it was first adopted, but we're finding that it's not accounting for the needs at I-Square. Our proposed parking for the expanded I-Square site is 371 spots. The mixed-use code minimum at 3 per 1,000 gross floor area equates to 268 spots for the 89,165 square feet that was proposed, and that was on one of the site plans that we reviewed last month. Our proposed parking is 103 spots above that minimum in the code. And the specific reasons for that are something maybe we should have reviewed in detail last month, but I'm going to take a minute and review some of those reasons now. If we look at Aronikoid's Off-Street Parking Requirements Code for regular commercial districts outside the mixed-use districts, take-down or sit-down restaurants, it requires a minimum of one parking spot for every three restaurant seats. If we were to apply this standard to the I-Square site, looking at Building 1's indoor restaurant space, we have 275 seats. Aronikoid's regular parking code standard would require 92 parking spaces. That's an 11,000-square-foot footprint. Mike referred to the fact that we have about 4,000 square feet of restaurant space there. That 92 parking spots is 59 spots beyond the minimum mixed-use commercial district code of 33 for that same 11,000 square feet. If we look at the Building 5 indoor restaurant space, that's the building that's proposed to go up north of the Imaginarium, that would also, that's similar in size to Building 1, we assume that would also sit 275 people, and it would equate to another 59 spots over and above the mixed-use code minimum 3 per 1,000 GFA. So that's 108 spots just between those two elements above the mixed-use commercial minimum, and we've only requested 103 beyond that. Another thing that's not accounted for in the mixed-use code minimum is the outdoor seating and rooftop seating space. Building 1 currently has 132 seats outside of the building. The Imaginarium rooftop is scheduled to seat 80 additional people for restaurant space, and the future Building 5 rooftop is estimated to be at 100 seats. Again, applying that same restaurant standard within the Aronikoid code outside of the mixed-use district, this outdoor seating would equate to an additional 104 spots beyond the mixed-use minimum. Employing parking is also not included in the mixed-use minimum. I-Square has between 16 and 20 employees on-site during peak hours currently. Murph's has between 8 and 10, and Building 5 is estimated to add 20 more since that's an entirely restaurant and food-oriented building. That would add 45, or I'm sorry, 44 to 50 additional seats over the mixed-use code minimum. The stage and surrounding green space is also not included in the gross-floor area calculations for the mixed-use code. For six months a year, we have events out there. The House of Guitars hosts events every Saturdays. We have endless community fundraisers and car washes and everything else that goes on. Our green space seating capacity is 400 seats. If we look at the Aronikoid's regular commercial district auditorium parking requirements, which would be the closest thing we could find to that sort of setup, that would add an additional 133 parking spots above the mixed-use code minimum. In total, these considerations, and that's before we account for the 15 spots the House of Guitars owns in our shared lot or the other businesses along Titus Avenue that their patrons park in our parking lots, in total, these requirements, if we were outside the mixed-use district, would be 613 spots at a minimum you'd be asking us to provide for the types of businesses we were running at I-Square, or 345 spots over the mixed-use code minimum requirements. We didn't propose 345 spots over that minimum. We only proposed 103, and that was after careful analysis of what our current business capacity is and what they require, as well as our future expectations for Building 5. The mixed-use parking code is established as a minimum for this very reason. We would require a variance to go under it, but it's okay to go over it, especially if rational analysis is performed to try to figure out the amount of space that's required for the patrons to be able to park. The second thing I wanted to make mention of again, and I think we talked about this last July when we were here looking at that southwest corner extended parking in the green space in front of it. The mixed-use district design guidelines do not prohibit parking lots bordering principal streets. They discourage it for sure, but our proposal isn't to have parking along Titus Avenue in that area. We have a 2,000-square-foot green space that borders Titus Avenue before the parking starts, that's backed by a decorative fence, so that you won't really be able to see the parking spots that are, those 21 spots that are added behind it. Nowhere in the district design guidelines does it say that parking along a principal street is prohibited. However, in the photo illustration Appendix B, there are photographs that show as long as you frame the pedestrian paths and make sure they're not disrupted by parking and add shrubs or fences. There's examples given. We have copies. I can just pass this one along to you if you'd like, that it would be all right to do it as long as you're not disrupting the pedestrian connectivity of the area. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we're not putting parking right on Titus Avenue. We have a green space fronting Titus Avenue, and it's certainly not prohibited in the mixed-use district. Thank you.
The, Mike Nolan from I-Square 400 Bakers Park. I'm supposed to do that every time I come back up here. It seems, though, we're having to ask this permission to be granted some sort of benefit to install parking at I-Square. It seems that the tone of this is headed in that direction, and that's not necessarily good because parking represents success. Parking represents potential growth, thriving businesses, a thriving town center, all those things we all imagine about when you think about a good town center. But it's not in my best interest to just spatter a parking spot every single spot I can find to put one, but we have to. It's necessary to have parking for our patrons, parking for patrons of the area businesses so that they can succeed. The parking lot that's been discussed quite a bit tonight, when you consider the land, the demolition, the installation of the parking lot will cost me $350,000. If you divide that by 21 parking spots, that's $16,667 per parking spot. I don't want to install any more parking spots than we absolutely need to, but these are necessary. I'm not going to watch our businesses starve while we have a full parking lot and an empty dining room. Before we move on to the second condition, does anybody have any questions on the parking lot? Hearing none, move on then.
Mr. Nolan, I think we'd rather hear the whole case and then ask the questions.
Certainly. The second condition we're asking you to remove is the sidewalk that was proposed to be added along the parking lot on Lorraine Drive. It clearly, it makes no sense for us. I'm certainly not opposed to installing sidewalks and creating a walkable community, a connected community, as everybody likes to refer to it as. This does not provide any of those things, doesn't provide any value or, and would seldom be traveled. There are two residences that are south of the parking lot on Lorraine Drive. It's a dead-end street, surrounded by private property. One of those residents will be moving out between now and June, and the second one at some point in the future. That leaves that sidewalk going literally to nowhere and serves no purpose. There is no north-south travel, pedestrian travel expected, so there's no destination there. It creates no connectivity, and it has a large expense for no value whatsoever to our development. I guess with that, I'm open for questions.
So with that, I'll admit to the Board. Mike, do you have questions?
I am sympathetic to your need for parking. I'm sitting here doing math on my, I was paying attention, just calculating. Math was never my strong suit, so thank you. Thank you for some of the, some of the updates there. One thing that I would really like to see, and I know that you and your team have done a very good job as a good faith effort to the other businesses in the area not to tow, and I know that you've said you have no intention to tow. I also understand that there is an insurance risk and burden to a shared parking agreement, so I will not ask for that or propose that. What I will propose is what I have, I guess, made up the name, a covenant not to tow. So an agreement with the neighboring businesses that you will not and do not plan to tow. That's not calling it a shared parking lot, but if some of their overfill happens to spill into your parking lot, you will not enforce, you know, a no, a no parking now or into the future. I think that's what makes me uneasy. I would like to see that with, you know, these businesses directly to the... Let me orient myself to the west of the proposed 21-space parking lot. Your testimony tonight has definitely made me rethink, so that was something I would like to see if this moves forward as a covenant not to tow or something written on paper that you will not enforce towing for those businesses. Secondly, the sidewalk, you know, we stopped by today, Mr. Huber and myself stopped by today, and we walked around with you and Diane. I got it, I remembered it. And we did walk over there, and afterwards Brad and I did walk up and down the sidewalk and look down Lorraine Drive. We took a walk down the dead end that already runs down the eastern side of 745. That sidewalk stubs out and actually stops, I believe, at the property line of 745. That sidewalk stubs out and actually stops, I believe, at the property line of 745, the border between 745 and 93. I will tell you that I would prefer, if I were parking back here in this 58-spot lot spot and going to the brewery, I would prefer to walk up Lorraine Drive and over. Now, that is a personal preference. It's not saying everyone will want to do that, and it's not saying anyone would want, not want to walk down through what's going to be, from what I can tell, a very nice project. I know I would like to see it, and I would take that route the first few times visiting the brewery. But just personal preference, I would like to walk north on Lorraine Drive and cross to get over to the brewery. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. That's just a preference for me, but I wanted to state that. As we try and make the town, you know, more connected, as you said, we try and maintain safety, that's something that I would like to see, but I suppose I am but one person, so that's all that I have.
Great.
And Mike, can I just speak to the covenant not to tow?
Yes, please.
So that would be somewhat difficult to enforce from the town's perspective. I think what would be better, if the board wished to entertain a revision to the approved site plan, is you can make a number of findings that would memorialize in writing the representations that Mr. Nolan's made about how the parking's to be utilized, that it's a community center, and that there would indeed be potentially some sharing in parking, but to have a line in the sand, you know, covenant not to tow or something like that, that would be a practical difficulty for the town to enforce. But I think your point can be addressed through some findings based on the presentation and what was shared with us tonight.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Well, to address those two, first, on the Lorraine Drive, it would only be the employees of the brewery that would be parking in that parking lot. The patrons would all be parking at the parking lot that is adjacent to the brewery, in front of the brewery, or next to it. And so we don't really expect that to, again, to build a sidewalk for two employees to walk twice, you know, two times a day. Really, the cost would not, would be hard for us to justify. The parking agreement and all the numbers that we stated tonight, all the information that we provided, square footage-wise, GFA-wise, and parking demands to support our parking demands based on our own businesses, buildings built that are on our property. I am doing my best to hold the line on always allowing our parking to be free and open, but I'm not in a position to guarantee that will always go forward. If, when we go to building, when we're fully built out, if we do not have enough parking, I'm going to protect our businesses first and have to do that.
That is understandable, and I was not aware that you had expected with the full build-out of, I'm sorry, my print is very small, Building Six on the easternmost, the retail store over there, one-story retail store. I didn't know if that, that being completely built out, along with the brewery, I'm hoping the brewery and both of those are very successful, obviously, that you would, you expect enough parking for both of those businesses in the lots that are there.
Primarily because they're complementary. The retail side of it will die off as the brewery hour gets in, or at least that's our vision at this point, that they have different peaking times, and that is by seating capacity, or if you go by the regular run to quite town code for parking, that parking lot's underserved as well. But I think that's an ideal case where that mixed-use model, shared parking, does actually work well together.
Okay.
Better than it does at the Bakers Park line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed? Excuse me. First thing, I have a question for staff. Staff provided some information to us, and I believe I'm holding a copy here of drawing C-2 dated 8/22/2012.
Yes, so that was just a copy from the March 12 meeting.
Right. So this was in the packet, I believe, of the kind of previously approved.
Correct, so we provided that for context.
So I just, I guess then maybe I have a sort of technical design question for the applicant. So looking at that drawing, the, and I can pass this over, Mike, if you'd like, I have no problem passing it over. Looking at that drawing compared to drawing C-2, which is dated 3/12/2018, which was in our more current application packet here, the layout of the parking lot that's in question here is slightly different, and I was wondering if we could just clarify that. So this, the older one doesn't have kind of a center walkway island between the 21-spot lot and the 47-spot lot, which I believe pushes it slightly further towards Titus Avenue? And I'm just wondering if we can.
Perfect. That sidewalk's already in place and has light poles in it. It was missed by our planner when they did that, but that sidewalk's already existing between the proposed 21-spot lot and the prior lot that's already installed. There's not really an easy way to remove that. It's got all the underground electric and everything plumbed underneath it.
Okay, so that, that is, I guess if I can, more correct than this older approved?
That is correct. The drawing you have here with the, you said 3/12/18 date of C-2? That one is the most current information, and if you see the two light fixtures are out on the peninsula, those are the existing that originally brought it to our attention that we had missed that.
Okay, and that, and this newer plan as well, the 3/12/18 plan, also eliminates a curb cut into the 21-spot.
Correct, I believe that was.
Which I think is good from a queuing standpoint. May create that last two spots being a little tight to get in and out of, but.
It does.
This is the one they got.
It does. We have that same parking scenario now where you do have to back out of a spot that's adjacent to curb, and it's managed, it's behind building, it's in two spots so far, and so far.
So good.
Yeah. We do leave a little extra wide in that last spot. You can see the painting markings on the drawing there.
Yes, I see that, yep.
Provide a little bit of relief for your tires.
So that island, if we can, or peninsula, whatever it is, that has the two light poles in it, so that, I don't know, I'm kind of just guessing here, is maybe five feet wide-ish?
Correct. It'll be about, it's actually currently was installed at about four and a half feet wide, and it's going to six, or it's six now?
No, it's six now, and we're going to make it go to nine.
Okay. Correct. Okay, so it was built to house the light pole.
It's the one that sticks out in between the two parking lots that we're talking about, okay?
Correct.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask, Mike, would you mind just repeating what Diane just said, just so we, for the benefit of the audience, for those viewing at home, so that everybody can hear that information? I'm sorry.
Except I forgot already.
It was from six to nine. I can restate it, so the, currently, the existing sidewalk that's on the site is six feet, and then it would be expanded to nine feet, correct?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct, and that kind of coincides with the other sidewalks, because the light poles are installed on center, 24 inches off the curb, that they protrude three and a half feet or so into the sidewalk.
Sure.
Pathway, so remaining five feet.
They have the wide bases on the bottom, familiar with them, yeah. So the difference, if you will, between these two plans, that nine feet, six feet, whatever it is, is coming out of where from the previously approved plan? Because we had that green space up front, and then I think, if I'm remembering right from when I was looking through this stuff earlier, there was like a, I think, a six-foot dimension behind the green space, kind of where the knee wall was.
Correct.
Back to the parking lot.
Correct.
There's no storage, I think, and so on.
Yep.
So where did we lose dimension up front?
Along Titus Avenue, on the front side of that garden.
Okay.
Between that and Titus, so it's too wide for that block, yes.
So this 18-foot, I'm looking now at, again, from the previously approved application, Titus Bakers Park Green Garden Landscape Plan dated July 27, 2017, and there's a dimension of 18 feet from the front side of that grass area, or landscaped area up to the sidewalk on Titus, so it comes out of there, is that correct?
Is that correct, Diane? My Diane, that's correct, okay, come on up. I don't want to misstate it. This has been jockeyed around a little bit to align the sidewalk with the.
Yes, absolutely, yep. So here's the, that's the one I'm talking about.
The C-2 dated 8/22/12, actually isn't, I don't think is exactly what got approved in July. We had removed that curb cut over into Bakers Park by the time we had the review in July, so as to not disrupt that pedestrian, to have an entry and exit so close to that light, so, but anyway, so the frontage on the 8/12 showed it as a 28-foot setback, and we're going to an 18-foot setback in the proposed, which is like what you're seeing on the landscape plan. The difference in that three feet for this peninsula sidewalk that comes across, splitting the current shared lot with the proposed 21 lot, that three feet came out of the back of the green space behind this knee wall. So this knee wall is actually going to be right up against the sidewalk.
Okay.
That.
Okay.
Okay.
So Diane, just before you go, just to clarify, so the green space is smaller?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's three feet.
Yep.
Can I, I'm sorry, I had one other question, if we can jump back, if that's okay. Now that you've got me looking at this file copy that we were just discussing, June 6, 2017, there's a parking lot that we approved in the, and I'm sorry if the sentences aren't firing, and I'm forgetting something, in the southwestern corner, on the corner of Grange Place and Stranahan Park. Is that lot, it's 35 spaces, is that lot being incorporated in the total overall count in our current build-out, in the parking space summary of C-2?
Can you point to that each parking lot here? On that?
That property is not part of the I-Square development.
Okay.
We were, that's the GG's Plaza or the back of that, which we don't own.
Okay, okay. I see what you're talking about. I think I'm good for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
Is there no parking on Lorraine Drive at all? On the road? Right. I'm not sure it's prohibited, but we don't. Maybe that's a question then for staff?
That actually would be a question for DPW, so I can find out if it's, if parking is permitted or if it's prohibited. It may be, unless it's expressly stated that it's prohibited parking, generally, the rule would be that there's no, on-street parking during the winter months in observance of the snowplow operations, but I'm not aware that there's a prohibited no-parking designation. But it's a residential street, so typically, parking wasn't going to be taking place there. It would be, you know, ancillary to the homes.
Okay. And that street is not going to be closed? That street is not intended to be closed, no. Okay. And how much were the one parking spot to create on, in the parking area at Baker and Titus, sorry? The entire parking lot's cost is 300, approximately, it's just over $350,000, or $16,667 per spot. Okay. And then how much was the sidewalk? As far as what's, which sidewalk? On the one that you're asking for relief? On Lorraine Drive, we estimated the cost to be approximately $15,000. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but. All right. And then, is there a total number of parking that you've already built out somewhere? Total parking spots that have been built out? No, not that I have at the current state. So I don't know how many? Do we know how many are proposed? That would be in addition to whatever's built out? Take as much time as you need. And then the next thing I'd like to know is the total build-out of current square foot that you guys have, no matter what the use is, and then additionally, the proposed that has been approved build-out in square feet, no matter what the use is? Is that a question? Yes, I asked if you could give me that information. Okay, how many square feet the full development is? It's going to be 92,000 square feet, correct? Is what is currently built out, is what I, I've asked for several things here. Okay, we'll get that for you. All right.
Excuse me, I'm just going to chime in. On the C-2, there's a existing site, extended site in total of building square footage provided on the table below under the parking space summary. If, and I'm not sure, Alan, if that's addressing the question or the information that you're
So the extended square feet, what is that a reference to? The 32,000 number? That would be Buildings Five, Six, and Two. And how much of that has been approved? Two, not Five and Six at this point. And Two is on schedule to be online when? We have not had a proposed, we do not have a proposed construction date for that yet. Okay. That's got a separate parking lot, but the. So the extended site area at 32-165 is either not approved or not in the design.
As a, just as a clarification, so it doesn't have final site plan approval. Preliminary was granted for the entire site and for all of the proposed development in terms of.
Preliminary was done for site, for Building Five?
I'm sorry? Preliminary, I believe that the.
That's correct.
Preliminary was granted for the entire development. Final was not granted for certain components of the proposed future development.
Got it. Right, and Building, and at Building Five, keep in mind that there already is a viable building and businesses in there, so although it is not, we've not built that Building Five, we have Murph's and the laundromat that, if you go by Run to Quite Town Code, actually it's going to demand more, would demand more parking spots than the mixed-use 15,000-square-foot building does. So the 57,000 that's existing does not include that building? That is correct. Do we know what that would be then? What would be? The usage of the place where Murph's is being used at the moment in the laundromat? Those are approximately 5,000 square feet. One's a bar and restaurant, and one's a laundromat. We're talking at 62,000 square feet right now of existing space. All right. And does the House of Guitars have a tow policy? They have enforced House Guitars-only parking only on Wednesday nights during the summer when we have our car show. It was overwhelming to the area parking, and nearly every business got strangled a little bit parking due to those events. House Guitars took the action of putting, House Guitars-only parking for their rear parking lot. They didn't, they did not enforce it on the side lot, on the shared lot, if you will, but they did on the rear lot, and I did not see them towing any cars, but it's, I imagine it's within their right to do so as the landowners. Anybody else have questions? I think I'm through, Mr. Chair.
You're set. I have no questions. Thank you for the additional information.
You're welcome.
Mr. Plon?
No, I have none.
Ms. Almack?
I'm all set.
Mr. Huber?
We asked to eliminate the parking at the southwest corner of Titus and Bakers Park and change that out for green space, because in some ways the site seemed to likely be lacking some of that, and you mentioned that there was green space on the side of the private drive, but what is the slope of the green space on the corner of Lorraine Park and the private road? When I looked at the elevation, or when I looked at the topographical map that you provided, it looks like it's at least a six-foot change in grade, and would be a steep area for utilization as green space, so I don't really think that that is an appropriate use of that space. So if that space is not going to be used as. So if that space is not going to be used as green space, um, because it's so steep, then where are the residents of the apartments and the residents of the cottages going to go outside? Because they can't go in the backyard because of the creek, they can't go on the s- uh, side of the road because of the step. And if everything else is a parking or building, um, where do they go?
Well, one, it's an apartment complex, for lack of a better term. Um, most do not have an abundance of green space. It's in a commercial district. So you would ask the same thing of any um, developer building apartments on Main Street or anywhere downtown, which they're going up all over the place. I imagine you could ask them the same question. We do have a limited amount of green space. It's an urban environment and it's um, built with that intention. I believe the residents that um, make the choice to move in there are going to have a view of the amenities and green spaces that are available to them and make the decision whether they or not they want to move there. Um, based on what they see.
So there'll be no green space? Is that my understanding?
Well, I consider that green space, but you said it isn't adequate in your view.
Because of the steep slope, yeah.
Well, it's not really, there, a six-foot slope over a sixty, seventy-foot deep lot is not really steep in my opinion, but
I have a question about the traffic.
I'm not allowed to argue with you, Brad.
Um, so uh, this is a genuine question uh, about the traffic study. Um, why was the site not more closely divvied up for the traffic and for the traffic study instead of using specialty retail as a generalization for the site? For instance, lower-rise apartments are pulled out as separate uses. Um, when you did the, the, the traffic study, you categorized some as low-rise apartments and some as specialty retail. Um, should not the Reserve Bar and Brewery divide, be um, defined as drinking places or bars under the ITE um, calculations? The restaurant defined as high turnover sit-down restaurant? The office area is defined as general office building? And the three-story apartment building uh, classified as mid-rise apartment in order to provide a more precise gauge of the traffic impacts? Specialty retail does not account for the gym, the museum, the conference center located on-site. Um, we have already built those out, so we know what those uses are, rather where specialty meat retail might be uh, acceptable for the areas that have not been leased out or still conceptualized. There's um, areas that have already been built out. Um, it, so why was that not fleshed out? My um, thought process on that, when I looked at those codes, is because they all have much higher traffic counts than specialty retail. Um, which would have an, a, a negative impact on the, on the, on the environment there. And then the second question about the traffic study is, why is the private road on the traffic study labeled driveway? And why are the two driveways not connected in the same manner that the private road is shown on the site plan? Would this not impact traffic count, counts on Lorraine Drive if it were to be connected? So I guess there's two questions there.
Well, to answer them kind of somewhat generically, um, our questions and conversations, our request tonight was made to remove two conditions of the approval, one being for the parking lot at the corner, southwest corner of Baker's Park and Titus Avenue. The other to remove the sidewalk along the parking lot on Lorraine Drive. Um, we stated it in our letter to the board, as well as La Bella did, that traffic studies are not a key measure or any measure at all for parking requirements. And I believe the scope of our conversation tonight should be around parking requirements and these.
The movement of the traffic through the parking lots is important. Um, and the, I didn't, I, yeah, the movement of the traffic through the parking lots is important. So if we're proposing these additional parking lots, how are we moving the traffic through them um, appropriately?
Well, what we did is we hired what is one of the best engineering firms in Rochester to perform a traffic analysis for us. They did so, they based, they used that code that you call specialty retail because that is the appropriate code to use for a mixed-use commercial area. So it allows for different uses. What the businesses are today could change in the future and could have different impacts on it, but the mixed-use commercial area is designed around a number of different businesses, all within one. I believe it is our engineer's impression that that, using that would kind of cover the gamut of different um, uh, factors that commit to traffic.
Yeah, you understand that. It's just that we know what the precise uses are now, so I don't think we should be using a sort of catch-all if we don't have to.
But again, we're talking about parking here. We made a request to discuss parking and sidewalk.
Um, the um, parking, how many parking spots exist on the private drive on-street parking spaces? When the last time you came here, you said that parking will be permitted on the private drive. So about how many parking spots do you think were available on the private drive?
I don't know. I guess if everybody parked end to end, you could probably put twenty cars along there.
Okay, and, but that is not included in the parking calcs.
That is correct.
Okay. How many total parking spots exist on Stranahan Park and Lorraine Drive?
Is this a test? And we've given you drawings with all the parking lot numbers on them. Do I really need to add them up for you, Brad?
The one on Stranahan Park only includes three parking spots. And there are an additional number of parking spots to the north between Titus Avenue and those parking spots kind of along cams. So those are additional parking spots that are unaccounted for in the um, parking numbers.
Okay. We made a case, if you go by around to Quay Town Code and the development that we prescribed, it would, around to Quay Town Code would call for six hundred and thirteen spots in I Square. Why are we talking about two or three parking spots in here or there, or having to test me on which ones are located and which spot?
Mr. Nolan, why don't we just clarify the question and see if we can answer it, so. What's the question exactly, Brad?
I was wondering about the number of parking spots that exist.
I know, but this is the same person that described a number of factors.
So Nolan, please, please, we're trying to get through this.
Thank you.
I was wondering about the number of parking spots that existed on Stranahan Park between Titus Avenue and those parking spots that are included in the park, in the parking calcs. You can see them on the site plan. There's three of them that are sort of outlined on Stranahan Park at the very far south end. But as you move up Stranahan Park, there are other on-street parking spaces that exist that should be included in the parking calculations, I believe, unless, I mean, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so the three on the south edge are ones that I Square installed uh, as part of the maintenance building development. There are seven on the east side of Stranahan in front of the Romeo Land Development and the cams, but we did not develop.
Okay, cool. I understand why they're not in the site plan now.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for providing that clarification, but I do think that they can still be used by patrons of I Square. Um, as we have, you were counting on-street parking in other areas. Um, so uh, Mr. Nolan at, is comparing the parking calculations for commercial zoning and the parking calculation for mixed-use commercial zoning, so.
For similar uses.
Right, for restaurants, right? So um, it was recently that you had come to the um, to the planning board and requested to expand the footprint of I Square and rezone nearby properties to Muck. However, now you're asking us to consider commercial zone parking calculations. If you were in the need of provisions afforded in the commercial code, why didn't you not request um, commercial code instead of Muck? And now, I think I know the answer. And I suspect that the reason is that because the Muck code is more consistent with the surrounding environment and that the commercial would be unlikely to be approved because of, it's not the same. Um, then I believe that it is also the reason that using the Muck parking calc- calculations are more appropriate than using the commercial zone parking calculations and why we should not be comparing the two.
And, and I can, if I can just, let me, let me just address that. So I, I think what the developer's trying to do, Brad, and, and I might be misunderstanding, but from my perspective, they're utilizing those metrics for those delineated uses to try to build a case about what's happening on the ground at I Square. And, and I understand that the Muck District minimum requirements might be different than what commercial requires, but from what I heard tonight, and, and the board can disagree with it, or they can agree with it, they're trying to demonstrate to the board what the tenanted uses or the restaurants or retail spaces within the I Square development are demanding as far as traffic, and they're trying to analogize that to other uses in the town. Um, and the reason for doing that is I think they're trying to build a case and demonstrate to you why they need parking in excess of the minimum requirement, so there's not a, not a one-size-fits-all from my perspective. I, I think they're just using it by way of example, so I, I don't get the sense that they're in any way trying to represent that that's, that's how their application should be processed. They're just using it as an example.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think that since the area is zone Muck, we should be looking at the parking requirements for Muck.
There are minimum, there are minimum though, Brad.
Right.
So we, I, I think we have to apply sensible analysis to
Yeah.
Say, does that minimum solve the problems for specifically what's in there? The minimum as it was um, devised in the mixed-use code was an estimate of the average for a condition that didn't exist in around it quite yet.
Yeah, I totally understand that. Um, and when you're talking about the reason judgments for the traffic study and making comparisons, I understand that. Um, oh, at the last meeting, uh, you, uh, Mr. Nolan said that the same person who did the traffic study for the original divi- development advised the number of needed parking spaces based on this analysis. Um, this was at about an hour and ten minutes.
I did not say that.
This is about an hour and ten minutes into the tape. Um, where is this document? How many does it call for? Uh, we keep talking about a reason judgment for parking. Uh, where is the parking study?
Well, I think when we submitted comments this time, we laid out
Right, I understand.
The analysis from it, so.
But, I mean, we, we have so many questions and so much back and forth about parking. Why not a parking study to lay out all the rest?
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking for. I mean, we, we shared what the details behind the analysis in our request were, and I'm not sure what else you require beyond that. And that was done not from some linear program, and that was done by looking at each use inside each building, applying common sense, getting input from our TY Lynn team, from our architecture team and from our customers, so.
So why not then a parking study? Why no parking? So we, we have so many conversations about parking. Why not a study to demonstrate the need for those parking spots?
So let me use this opportunity. So I think I'm hearing you, Brad, say that there's missing information. That for, in order for you, you believe that the board would need to make.
I think we could make a more informed decision with a document prepared by people who know exactly what they're talking about and like, that's their whole job is to provide a parking, is to do a parking study. And that, that would really help us make a, a very informed choice about the need for parking in this space.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to my question. So you feel that there's information missing at this point?
Yes.
Do others on the board feel that there's information missing?
Can I, can I ask a question very quickly of the applicant prior to answering that question?
I'd like to get my answer to my question first, and then we'll go back to that.
Okay.
I really need to know, so before this meeting continues, I want to know if there's a missing information is what I'm looking for. I, I feel there isn't, so I'll give you my opinion.
I, I would, I would be in agreement with you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, excuse me, I'm pretty comfortable with, I think it was Diane, uh, Diane's information.
And, and I think what, what you should also do, Mr. Chairman, is this is a public hearing, so allow the public now its opportunity to, to raise questions for the board and, and the dialogue may develop as, as that occurs as well. Okay, so I still want to understand from the rest of the board. Can I still ask, or are you telling the whole?
No, absolutely, you can ask, but I'm just suggesting that that might be a.
I just wanted to double check that.
This is the longer your meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I asked some questions. I'm waiting for some answers.
I still got that one, I still got that one written down.
I, we're ready for those when you are. Hopefully, we can get some conclusion to what we would like to get to tonight.
So in regards to the parking study, you, you don't need to see that tonight?
It would have been helpful at this point. Am I gonna extrapolate some things? Yeah, is it gonna be good for them? I don't know. Is it gonna be good for the town? I don't know.
Okay.
But that's the best I'm gonna do at this moment.
Mr. Palermo, Ms. Hollenbeck?
I'm pretty comfortable.
I'm, I'm fine.
So Brad, I'd like to move on from that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, my next question is, um, how many people does?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, it's very, it's a very quick and simple question, that's all, yes. Do you currently have enough parking for operations at I Square at your peak? This is, this is current build out. At peak hour, do you currently have enough parking?
We do not. Um, currently, we run out in this time of year, we're running out of parking or at capacity, which in my view is less than a handful of open parking spots anywhere within my sight, two nights a week. During the summer, that happens either three or four nights a week. We're strangling our businesses.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Currently, in your current site build out, a lot of that parking is being used by Murfs. Is that correct? So.
They do it in, in the evening hours, yes. They come for a large portion of the uh, four o'clock and after parking, yes.
The peak hours of utilization of the parking lot? Would I be safe to say that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, but Murfs is not going to be, is not in the long-range plan for the development, is that so?
No, that's, I, I hope they are.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have a lease drawn with them. They have till next May on their current lease, and we hope that they'll be, you know, tenants of the new building.
Okay. Um, you talked a lot about the seating and the uh, building. What does the fire code permit at I Square? And is the amount of seats in relation to the amount that the fire code permits?
Our stated fire code capacity for the building is, I believe, six hundred and sixty-seven people. Um, we use seating dynamics for two hundred and seventy-five. Uh, the reason for the odd number, a large number, it's based on numbers of egress, paths of egress, and because we have so many doors surrounding I Square, it's got a large capacity.
With the building having three hundred and seventy-one, is that what you said?
I think it's two seventy-five, isn't it?
Two seventy-five?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, uh, that, that's the maximum occupancy for the building, is that?
Without the roof and without the outdoor seating, correct?
Okay, so even if, it, it would not be legal to have a person at every seat in the building? Because, so there's more seats than there, that the fire code allows in the building, is that correct?
No, that is not correct. There, the fire code capacity is six hundred and sixty-seven people. We have two hundred and seventy-five seats.
Okay, and that doesn't, okay, got it, thank you.
Yes.
Um, where is the snow storage for the front lot?
The front lot at Baker's will um, be in the same snow storage, same model we use for snow storage now, which is the in, inner corner spots on the non-traffic lane. So they'd be on the corner of Baker's Park at the two. We'd lose those two parking spots in the winter time, closest to Baker's Park.
Um, will you continue to erect the Christmas tree? Uh, how is that included in the new site plan?
Unfortunately, it is not yet. Um, we lost, we lost the location. We dug up that Christmas tree base. You'll see it sitting out along the side of Titus Avenue. It was kind of a sad moment. But um, hopefully we'll resurrect that plan because we enjoy our winter festival and.
Is that something that should be added to the site plan?
No. I don't think putting a Christian holiday tree on a site plan is appropriate.
Um, you've stated that other businesses are welcome to use your parking lots on more than one occasion in order to support your need for additional spaces. Based on this, um, would you, and based on this and adding the finding that you've said this about the use of your parking lot by other businesses, would you be opposed to erecting signage at the entrance of these lots to indicate that?
No, I'd not be willing to do that. We, my indication is not a forever, that we're always going to allow anybody to use our parking lot and it needs to, or, or it would be our goal to always provide enough parking where our neighbors can share in it. But if it becomes a situation where we are maxed out, as I stated earlier tonight, we have to protect our businesses and our tenants first.
So then, do you think it's fair to use those businesses and their parking needs in a justification for additional parking spots?
We did not use them in the numbers we provided for you tonight, and all the parking requirements of six hundred and thirteen spots does not take into consideration any properties that we don't own.
I believe that the letter that you sent.
Yeah, we addressed a couple of them because what we wanted to do is not necessarily make the case that we're willing to provide parking for everybody in the neighborhood, but to demonstrate how underserved the neighborhood is. If you look at businesses like the Titus Tavern, the shoe store has one parking spot, the tailor has one parking spot. When they arrive at work, they're sold out of parking before they open their door. We have a yoga studio that has two parking spots, a Harold Salon that has two parking spots. We have Titus Tavern that has sixteen business spots. Well, hold on a minute, hear me out. I, if you asked a question, I'd like to answer it completely. What I, what the point I'm making is that every single business within that block area is underserved on parking. We're taking the brunt of it along with the House of Guitars. Both of us are trying to be as gracious as we possibly can with our properties. We don't need to put signs up to tell everybody they can park it up. We don't need to put signs up to tell everybody they could park at our parking lots. We don't, we don't need it in our justification for the number of parking spots we're answering. Putting parking spots in should not be looked at as a privilege. This is trying to make our town center, our town center thriving and successful. Period, the end. I don't understand the line of questioning.
So before we go back and forth, I think the question was asked, the question was answered.
Thank you.
Is there another question?
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that I understand what the answer was. The answer was.
No.
Please let him.
The answer was that you are, you, you don't want to share the parking with the other, the other businesses in the long range, and you are not willing to erect signage to indicate that you're, I, I don't want to use the word shared because that's not exactly what I'm saying, but that the, the parking isn't, is open to the, the.
So I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let our legal counsel clarify, because I think I heard it different, so.
Me too.
It sounded to me like the developer's making a representation that he's willing to share parking until usage on the I-Square site essentially, for, for lack of another way to explain it, boils over. When it reaches max capacity within its own boundaries, then the developer may look to control its parking, but it sounds like until that time, he's willing to share it in the spirit of, of the district and, and neighboring uses.
So hold on one second, hold on one second. So is that a fair representation?
That is a fair representation. My answer to Bradley's question was simply no, that he asked about putting, I thought the question was simply about putting a sign up, and the answer is no.
Rob, just a clarification point. When we were talking earlier about the, the finding, is that what, that's what you're referencing, correct? Is that, clearly, Mr. Nolan and the I-Square team are, have the best intentions here. That's the finding that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and, and so it's essentially an inducement for this board to act, right? If it's a finding in the resolution, it's, it's an inducement on which you base your decision. So if tomorrow, or, or three days from now, if an approval is, is granted here, and signs go up, this is no one can use this parking, that would be an issue that the board could consider the next time this application comes in. And that's, that's a factor that you all can consider next time he's asking for a revised configuration for a building or something like that. But if that representation carries forward and parking is used in the way he's describing it, and maybe in, in 10 years, it's no longer viable to be shared, that's a different story.
Okay. So is there any other questions for clarification?
You mentioned that the Hog Concert Series is a significant driver for parking needs. How many parking spots does the Hog property camp contain? Are these not usable during this park concert series? Is the Hog not willing to allow I-Square customers to park there, especially after they close and essentially?
So I thought I heard that the parking is, is pretty much shared right now until there was some event at the House Guitars that they restricted parking in their parking.
The car show, we have on Wednesday night, the classic car.
Besides that, there's been no other restrictions that I heard, that I heard, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you mentioned that the concert series in the letter was a huge driver for parking.
It can be.
Was one of your primary, one of the nights that you would commonly overflow. But since it's done in conjunction with the Hog, aren't people allowed to park in the Hog parking lot as well?
Certainly, but it, it overflows. You know, we run out, their parking is not unlimited either. And we found both the rear lot and the center lot, along with the street-side parking, all are pretty much maxed out and.
But it does help to mitigate the need for parking.
Well, certainly, I suppose it could. Every, every parking spot counts.
Okay, and then the sidewalk. Do you have evidence to support the claim that the sidewalk on Lorraine Drive will cost $15,000?
No, that's okay. No, not with us tonight.
Any other specific questions?
I have staff questions. Do you want me to hold those?
I would, wanna hold those till after the public hearing or not? Okay. There was one question that was asked.
Oh, yes.
Ellen, that's a couple, Diane has your answers.
I wasn't sure it was the right time, so. So, current building, build-out, at this point, on the existing site is 27,650 square feet, plus existing businesses is 6,000 square feet, for a total current I-Square footprint of 33,650 square feet. Current parking spots is 171. That includes 42 on-street parking.
How many on-street, I'm sorry?
And then.
I'm sorry, how many was that on-street?
So there's 171 total that have been built on this site so far. Forty-two of those being the on-street, so 129 have been built so far, you know, off-street.
Yeah. The off-street ones, or the on-street ones, where are those being counted off of?
The 31218, I'm sorry, the C2 overall site plan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was not clear.
Okay.
Are they on Granger Place, or they on?
They are, all the ones that are highlighted and bold, which is the south border of Stranahan Park, on the south side of the property, both sides of the street on Baker's Park, and the three on the east side of Stranahan Park, west of the maintenance building that we installed too.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
And then, so of the 33,000 square feet, then we still have 32,000 that would be proposed less the amount that occupies the space that is currently housing Murfs, right? Because Building 5 is gonna replace that.
That's right, but I'm trying to see if I'm understanding what you just said. Could you ask that question? So we have 33,650 square feet today
Right.
that includes Murfs in the laundromat, like 6,000 square feet of that is Murfs in the laundromat.
That, that number includes that, okay. So of the 32,000 that is still being proposed?
Well, no, the total on the overall site, I think, was 89,165. So I'm trying to subtract that in my head, and for some reason, my mind's blank, so.
You're talking to the extended?
I'm talking about the full build-out. I'm talking about.
Full build-out is 89,165.
You're asking me for full parking today without the full build-out? So I'm trying to understand the impact of everything once there's a full build-out. Are we just setting you up for disaster? So you've got 32,000 less six to still go, right?
No, it's like 56,000, or 55,000 and some change left to go.
Because what it's telling me on this, on the C2 that's dated 31218 is that if I go over there today, I should be looking at 57,000 square feet of buildings.
That's on the existing site. That's the existing site square footage, which included Building 2 build-out and Building 5 build-out.
So they may not be on the ground built yet.
So it's not there yet, yeah.
So that's my question that was answered differently to begin with. All right, so we, currently, we have 33,000 square feet that we're trying to accommodate parking for.
Well, no, our proposal is to accommodate the build-out, yeah.
But today, if I had to do it, that's what we're looking at.
Oh, yes.
All right, all right, that's a little more helpful. And Building 2 is set in stone, there's no moving Building 2?
You mean to another location?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand the question.
Is there any reason why it could not be swapped out with the parking lot at the corner of Baker and Titus at this moment? And put the parking back there? Aside from the fact that you just don't want to do it? I mean, is? There's no infrastructure in there, is there?
Well, there is the pump house, and the, you know, underground infrastructure is there in anticipation of that building being there. So, I mean, obviously, there's no foundation there, yeah.
I think it's not what the applicant is asking for.
That's right.
Right, I'm just.
So there, some of the utilities are at that site?
Weren't the utilities already stubbed in for the other buildings when they built Baker's Park?
The pump station, I know is there.
No, the, not for the apartment building, for the proposed buildings that were supposed to be on Titus Avenue. So shouldn't utilities already be present for the building that was originally proposed there? And just connect to those utilities?
So you're talking about the current buildings on Titus? I'm trying to understand the question.
When the, it's mine, I might be wrong, but I thought that when they built Baker's Park, that they stubbed in all the connections for the buildings which would be subsequently built. And when they built Baker's Park, they, the conceptual plan called for buildings where the parking lot that we're talking about now is. So Mr. Richards was saying swapping the parking lot that we're talking about now with the apartment building, which seems feasible because the utilities, in theory, are already stubbed in there for the buildings that were proposed in the conceptual plan. And it also moves the parking lot away from Titus Avenue, which is more consistent with the Muck guidelines and gives everybody what they're looking for.
It's not, it's not what we're looking for.
It gives you the 21 spots.
I'm sorry, but it's not what we're looking for, and we, last fall, in preparation for installing the parking lot at Bay Goodman, or at Baker's Park and Titus.
As a point of discussion, Mr. Chair, I think that we can probably move along at your discretion.
Yeah, okay, and so I apologize, you were trying to finish one.
Oh, that's okay. It's not our preference to move that building now.
Yeah, because I think that was discussed in quite a bit of detail at the original.
It was.
And I wasn't gonna drag all that up, but anyways. I'm okay. So, thank you, Ellen. Any other unanswered questions, any other questions on parking or the sidewalk before I open up the public hearing? Please take a seat so we can open up the public hearing. With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to this application, please come to the podium. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Ann Burns. I reside at 199 Bellhurst Drive, and I'm here this evening as co-chairperson of the community group Helping Arundicote Plan for Progress. We still support the Nolan's continued investment in Arundicote and appreciate it. We are concerned on an administrative and legal level about the multiple special planning board hearings that have been held, the very short notice to the public of these hearings, and the potential legal precedent these special hearings set for future applications to the town of Arundicote. I just wanted to say that for the record. Relative to the two conditions that the applicant wants removed from the approval of last month, for the sidewalk along the west side of Lorraine Drive, we understand the reason for the planning board recommending this. It was recommended, as everybody has said, to provide connectivity from the existing public sidewalk to the north on Lorraine that provides pedestrian access to Titus Avenue. This is very much in keeping with the goals of the mixed-use commercial district, the zoning code for the district as well. It also supports the tenants of the two master plans that overlay the district to provide safe access for pedestrians to travel throughout the district, not just to Baker's Park. Providing all options for safe pedestrian passage is what we're looking at, as Mr. Evelyn noted. As a compromise, we propose the town include this sidewalk construction in their sidewalk funding plan for the coming year. This would ensure that the sidewalk is built to benefit the public good, which is what we're trying to accomplish here. In terms of the parking for condition number six, the elimination of the 21 parking spaces at the southwest corner of Baker's and Cooper and Titus, understanding all the considerations presented by Diane and Mike this evening, something that could and should be considered is shared parking across properties, utilizing existing asphalt, so not having to put in more asphalt. I'm just wondering, thinking out of the box, has any effort been made to reach out across the street on Titus to the church, Chase Bank, and the school district? Other communities like Scanny Atlas and Pittsford, with significant tourist visitors over what we have on Titus Avenue, are able to make shared parking work for the benefit all the businesses in their center core districts. In addition, they put their parking lots behind buildings. Up to now, there have been no buildings built on the Titus frontage, which has been brought up this evening. Parking lots have been put in before buildings have been built on Titus. Building 3, where IHOTS used to be, is now a parking lot. Building 7, where the historic Clem Dairy and the Bay Goodman Building was demolished, is slated for a parking lot. When Building 5, where Murfs and the laundromat is constructed, there will also be 33 parking spaces that will also front Titus as well. The applicant is gaining parking on the Vercrusi property and also taking down homes on Lorraine for additional parking. We agree, in conclusion, with the board's decision at the last special hearing to use the space at this corner of Baker's and Titus to create meaningful green space rather than use it for parking. When the community came together in two design charrettes, no one brought the idea forward of having parking lots spread across this section of Titus Avenue. The community asked for buildings on the streetscape, creating an inviting experience. We asked the planning board to advocate for the two master plans for this neighborhood that have been community-driven. We asked the planning board to stand by their decision of March 12th, requiring the elimination of these 21 additional parking spaces and pursuing cooperative agreements across property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? That'll close the public hearing. The applicant like to address any of the comments?
The conversation at this parking lot, and we're talking about 21 parking spots, keeps coming up. The reality at the end of the day is that we're not out to build parking spots where they're not needed, but parking spots where they are needed are needed. People are not going to park at the church or at Chase Bank, cross three different roadways to get there, because you can't cross north and south over Titus Avenue without first going over to the Titus Tavern corner and then crossing to the south. It's just not a realistic pattern. I understand people will walk, and we do have a lot of pedestrian customers, biking customers, and alternative methods to arriving at I-Square. But at the end of the day, most people are going to come there. They have a lot of choices. They aren't gonna come there if they're, if the parking lot is overstuffed. It just, it turns away business. We see it every weekend when we have big events upstairs in the banquet center. Our market goes down 20, 30, 40% in revenue that day. So now we're forced with a decision. Do we take this revenue, or do we want this revenue? Why do we have to make a choice? We want to be thriving and successful. We shouldn't have to choose whether the Imaginarium is open at night, or we have a banquet, or it's gonna be a hot summer night, and we're gonna have a lot of people on the roof, a concert. We can't do any of those things in multiples. We have to pick. We shouldn't have to make those choices, and again, we're installing parking that we need, and we're not asking for anything more than that. The, again, sidewalk on Lorraine Drive, I can't reiterate enough, it's not a good idea. It serves no purpose. There is one home that will remain throughout this summer. So we're gonna put a sidewalk in so two people can travel north and south for part of the block. They'd have to go out into the road, then come back onto our sidewalk, then go back out into the road, then come back into the sidewalk. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this is a portion where the board will deliberate, but I think you had some staff questions, Brad.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about gross floor calculations. Is the need for employee parking included in gross floor? Is the need for employee parking included in gross floor, gross floor area calculations, especially if kitchen areas are included in square footage calculations?
So the way the, the parking regulations currently work is it's a strict square footage count, or it's a per-seat count, or it's a per-staff member or per-office count, depending on the type of use. So it doesn't take into consideration the finished space or the habitable space, it's just a strict square footage calculation.
So that would mean that areas like elevators, hallways, bathrooms, they would count towards the gross floor area even though there's not generally people always in those areas?
So it's, it's a pretty accepted standard, you know, sort of across the industry that square footage is counted by the building. The functional ability to take away some of those accessory corridors or things would be, could be potentially challenging. So it's just a simple calculation.
So that answers my second question, which is, is GFA intended to be used on a room-by-room basis or on the site as a whole? And I think you said on the site as a whole.
It's on the side of the whole, and what I think, just from a, from a functional standpoint, the calculations are, and the, the per-square-foot requirement that is developed for each of the uses takes into consideration that, based on the use, that some portions of the building aren't physically being occupied by people.
So I just wanted to ask that question because in the letter, the applicant had just, was using parts of the building to calculate gross floor area where he should be using the whole site in order to make those calculations for parking.
So if he was using the whole site, then the, the parking minimum or the parking demand would actually increase?
Right.
Do you know what I mean? In terms of what the need might be?
Second question is, the city often marks areas on plans as future development site. What are the parameters around doing this here?
We don't have that. That's something that's based on the city charter and their zoning code. It's often based on either their ownership status or their, it sometimes can be based on whether or not they own the underlying property or it's been foreclosed upon. And a great example might be the former psychiatric center. And so then they typically, the city of Rochester has a process by which they can then RFP the property, and it becomes what is known as a planned use, planned unit development, and that's a provision that's only allowed by virtue of the city charter, their city zoning code, and the fact that they're a foreclosing entity. The town of Arundicote is not.
So we couldn't delineate a portion of the site as acceptable or as a good idea for it to be developed into a structure in the future? By a private, by that owner, or not necessarily through an RFP process?
Yeah, I don't think that our code has that provision.
Short answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to go-
I like to use a lot of words when I answer, Rob, your, your-
I wanted to go back to the-
Usually they like the long answer.
The traffic study, he said that there was, that the traffic study advised a number for needed parking spaces based on that traffic study. We don't have that document?
We do, no. The document that we have, based on the parking demand, is the one that, the application that was received, that's before you now. The, have you all, and you've all seen the, the review of that from LaBella?
Okay, okay. And then this one, I don't know who's best to answer. At the last meeting on this topic, I expressed that I had reservations about voting to approve Seeker based on some issues that I believe could be addressed during site plan review. They were the amount and location of parking, the screening of the parking lot on Lorraine Drive and the fence across the creek. During the subsequent review of all these issues, we addressed them. However, amending the site plan in the manner being requested would renew my seeker concern about impact community character and may have made me vote differently on Seeker. If we are to make this change, how does that impact that decision that has been made?
I can address that. So the seeker determination was based on, if you'll recall, was based on the proposed site plan as presented by the applicant originally. So it contemplated the full build-out with the existing parking. And so the Part II and Part III analysis that this board voted on considered the potential impacts, the proposed and possible mitigation measures, and rendered a negative declaration because this application doesn't present any new information or doesn't present anything different than what was originally examined under Seeker, that determination of significance stands. And so that this decision will actually point back to that determination of significance in the decision-making that happens tonight. And if Rob would like to either add?
Yeah, and specifically to address your question, Brad, you still have the same tools in your toolbox that you had last time. The difference tonight is that the developer presented additional information regarding the demand for the parking. The site plan review regulations and the town code still require you to look at good, sound land use planning, the design standards, the impacts on health, safety, and welfare. And you balance that against the need for the parking and making sure there's proper circulation on-site, safe ingress and egress and all of those things. So you still have the same tools in your toolbox, it's no different.
Okay. What is the difference between revised site plan and amended site plan? And how is this site plan amended?
So the revised and amended site plan are sort of interchangeable, and Rob can address that.
Yeah, so, so what they're seeking is they're seeking an amendment to the approved revised site plan, right? So we started this whole endeavor years ago with the site plan. They came in for revised site plan approval, and now they're seeking an amendment to certain conditions that were imposed as part of your, your site plan approval. And they have the ability to do that, and what they've done tonight is presented additional information. That doesn't say that you need to, to vote to approve based on that information. Again, you still have the same tools in your toolbox. You have to tie back your analysis, your rationale, and your thinking to the standards in the town code and, and what the board's charged with considering on balance against their interests as a developer and, and a business owner.
Thank you. Those are all of my staff questions.
Does anybody else have any staff questions? I have one. Nobody else has any. So I'd like to clarify, so I'm the one that granted these special meetings, and we've had two. I want to ensure that we followed all the rules and all the legalities and all the proper notices.
We did.
Thank you. With that, before we begin deliberations, is there any last questions for the applicant before we do that? I don't want to leave anything unanswered at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, and it's, it's sort of, I guess, board discussion, and I'm not sure how, maybe Town Attorney can help me with this. I have some discussion points that I think the applicant may want to respond to. Should I ask those as general statement questions?
If you need, if you need input from the applicant, I think you should ask them now before we begin.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yeah, deliberations, deliberations are deliberations. It's not intended to be a dialogue, so to the extent that you have questions, you should ask them. I have a question then. So, thank you guys for the information you provided. My question, I guess, is we lost some potential, or we lost some green space in that area up front, in front of the 21-car lot that we're discussing, right? Would the applicant be open at all to, I'm looking at the lot that is to the east of proposed building five? I don't know how many, it says 51, but, you know, I'm talking more about the northern end of that. Would the applicant be open to, it appears, and I just drew a line across here from the front of this one? And it appears to me that if you were to eliminate two-ish spots, we could have the same treatment in front of the lot, kind of where Murph's and the laundromat sits today, as what we previously approved in front of the 21-car lot, the knee wall with some landscaping. Is that something that you would be open to discussing?
I have a question before he answers. I believe we gave preliminary approval on building five and that parking lot. Am I correct?
You are correct.
So I don't think we could-
If the configuration was also different on the building, we had a building that actually faced that parking lot area. None of this has been final approved on that.
That's what I was trying to get at. So I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
So I know what the question you're asking, and whether the applicant's willing to do it or not. I don't know if that's appropriate considering it's all preliminary right now. Is it okay?
Those, those approvals are preliminary right now. When they come in and seek final approval, that's a discussion that can be had.
So let me ask the question then. So are you asking, when he comes back for final, are you asking if he's willing to put more green space if it's available unless we're asked them to do something different there?
Yeah, I guess my concern is-
Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I think my concern is the loss of, I don't know exactly what we're talking about, three or six feet, or whatever it is of green space out in front of the 21-car lot. And I was trying to come up, and I understand that you're saying that's preliminary and that it would come back. I'm just trying to get, I guess, a flavor of, is that something that's-
So you're just asking, is that something he would consider?
I guess, yeah, I guess.
I think when the time comes, we'll be back here, we'll be discussing that parking lot. There was actually a few reservations about that parking configuration brought up when we discussed doing our revised site plan in general. They did grant preliminary on it, but I do need to come back for that building and the parking lot that is directly behind it, or that parking area, north onto that parking lot. So we'll have a better feel for what it looks like once we design the building and see how that all fits in. That one area, the sidewalk, is designed to be really wide, and would lend itself to something green to break that up, but really hard for me to foresee what exactly that would look like down the road, but we'll certainly all be talking about it when that time comes.
Fair enough, okay. Can I ask one additional question over on the sidewalk side of things?
Yeah.
Similar question, I guess. Would it be possible or feasible to entertain, and maybe this is also, again, a question partially for you, Rob? If we were to not, if we were to remove the imposition of putting the sidewalk in now, but if we were to eliminate, and I, I can't tell for sure if it was, you could just eliminate four, if you'd have to eliminate six spaces, to essentially pull the eastern edge of the paved area west, leaving room where a sidewalk could be installed if and when future development does or doesn't happen, and it becomes appropriate from a, you know, sidewalk walkability situation?
It really wouldn't make sense to do so for the reason that we install granite curbing, and curbing technically frames in the sidewalk area. So to leave that space aside, to open to that, you really couldn't because that wouldn't allow us to end cap the parking spots themselves. The, there, in my vision, I can't see ever a viable purpose or any connectivity created by a sidewalk in that position.
Okay.
And just to supple, supplement that Spencer, I mean, good forward-looking planning is exactly what, what you're charged with doing, but you should make sure that when you do that, you tie it to a rational basis. So if, if you can think of a legitimate reason to reserve that space, and, and the board can discuss it and articulate it, that's certainly within your authority to do that. It may not be something that the, the developer likes, it may not be something they want to do, but if you can tie it to the standards in the code and what you're charged with doing, it is within your purview to do that. You just need to articulate rational reasons for why. Okay? Okay, thank you. I think I kind of understand what you were asking, though. You were trying to get a compromise that could help for something in the future.
Yeah.
But I think you're saying the construction does not, I didn't understand.
Wouldn't really lend itself to that. In order to pour concrete, which is the sidewalk, or the, both sidewalk and/or the parking lot in that area would be, it's poured, it's typically poured between the curbs, so you have to install the curbs for, are one of the first things we would do in that. And if you didn't pour the side, you'd just have a cavity there. And it would be nearly the same.
Fill that in with grass or something temporarily. Again, like, I think you nailed it on the head, I was trying to come up with a-
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, it's just-
Something.
The sidewalk does not provide any connectivity for Arundicote residents in that location.
Okay.
I've got a couple of proposals, maybe some compromises that you might be interested in hearing.
If you can make it as a question, sure.
Yeah. Would you be, here's a couple of thoughts that I had about making this a win-win and hoping to be able to make everybody happy here. Would you consider swapping the apartment building and the parking lot locations?
No.
Okay. Would you consider swapping the retail building and the screened parking lot locations?
No, I would not.
Would you consider finding another location for the 21 spaces and instead create green space?
No, I would not.
Would you consider on a lesser number of spots and a deeper green space with more robust plantings and unregulated parking with signage?
I can't imagine how much more robust we could make something than a 2,000-square-foot garden, but no, I would not consider it.
Do you have any other compromises that you might suggest that I didn't come up with?
No, we are, and the way I'm looking at this is you put 10 conditions on my approval, I came back asking you to remove two of them. I believe that they're in, just in that is your compromise. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify, we're not removing any conditions, you're amending the existing site plan approval, and you're only doing that based on additional information and discussions that were had tonight, if you even entertained doing it. It's not that, and, and the board shouldn't consider that 10 conditions were imposed, some of them weren't acceptable to the developer, so that's why we're back. No, additional information, new information was provided, and that's what you're considering tonight. You may find it persuasive, you may think that, that new conditions relative to these types of elements are appropriate. That's what's before you tonight, the, the parking and the sidewalk, and whether or not the two conditions relating to those are still appropriate, and whether any new conditions are appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. So is there any more discussion from the board? At this point? What do you mean? What do you mean? Any comments, questions before we entertain motions?
I, I want to make a comment that I think that, that the I-Square team came tonight with a lot more information than we saw originally. I think it was a lot of really great information. I think this information is going to help make a decision on really, you know, sound footing. It was good to see some of these calculations. They've made a very good case. So that's, that's, that's all I have to say, is the information was appreciated. I think we had really good discussion tonight. But I, I feel, I feel like I'm in a very good spot, so.
Any other comments?
I do. The site plan, now inclusive of the enlarged proposal, includes approximately 367 parking spaces, which is 87 parking spaces over the requested amount, which is 280 spaces at three per thousand, and just shy of double the minimum parking requirements, which is 187 spots. To put it most simply, that's enough parking spots for an individual to visit I-Square every single day for a full calendar year and never have to park in the same place twice. Removing just 21 spots, the front parking lot, and replacing them with green space and/or rearranging the buildings to align more closely with the overall intent of the Muck Guidelines will still allow the developer to have 346 spaces, which is 66 spots over and above the required amount. Add to that approximately three spots, more than that, on the northern end of Stranahan Park, and about 10 spots along Lorraine Drive, and at least eight along the private drive, which were omitted from the site plan. And we have recovered the parking spots we have removed and restored the number of spots back to 367, which was the amount requested by the developer. These restored and additional 87 spaces will accommodate those, the need for those in the development which defy the parking guidelines, will more closely align with the intent of the Muck Guidelines, and are in line with what was requested. And will put the total number of parking spaces requested at just seven spots shy of the, of double the amount required under the town code. So what I'm trying to say here is, when we count the parking spots that were omitted from the site plan, he recovers the 21 spots, giving him the 367 parking spaces that he requested.
I'm sorry, you said omitted.
So they weren't included in the parking calculations, the one on Stranahan Park between Titus and the end, and all the parking along Lorraine Drive was not included in the parking calculations. So I'm not going to argue that he doesn't need those 21 spots. What I'm going to say is that they already exist. We can give them to him, allow him to have all of the parking that he requested, and also fulfill the whole total intent of the Muck Guidelines. So in that way, everyone is getting what they're looking for. The developer gets 367 spaces, the neighborhood gets their green space, and everything is more in line with the guidelines, both the master plan and the Muck Guidelines. So- So I think that that's one way to go. Or else we could reduce the number of parking in that, in that, in that front parking lot, give him 10 spaces and 10 to 21. I don't think it would be a good idea for us to approve the amended site plan the way that it was, sort of, I guess, rejected, rejected is the wrong word, but, but put away. Like, it should be different in some way. But doing it in this way gives the developer all 367 spaces that he wants. Do you understand what I'm saying? Everyone's got blank, blank looks. But if he wants 367 spaces, we can give him 367 spaces, just as he asked, to fulfill the need that he asked. But just not necessarily where he asked them to be.
I don't have a comment on that. I have other comments, but any?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Comments on that?
I don't have any comments on that specific. I've got comments though on this. I mean, if we're, I assume we're in the persuasion portion of our evening here.
Sorry, I don't want to, are we able to take a brief recess before we really get into deliberations?
I understand that some folks may need to take that.
It's been, it's been, yeah, I don't want to make the same mistake I made a couple of months back.
Yeah, so if you want to take, we could keep it to.
Three minutes, five minutes?
Five minutes? That would be great.
I'll keep it to.
Thank you.
Five to 10. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman. Might you use your microphone? Everybody pulled them away. You need to all pull them back down now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richards.
I'm sorry.
Did you have some comments?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The current buildout is 33,000 square feet, 33,650, according to the testimony that we heard tonight. That's about 100 spots, I think. I mean, it's three per thousand. So I'm not sure. My other problem with all of this is that I'm not sure when the entire schedule is for the rest of buildout. We don't have a schedule on building two. We definitely don't have a schedule on building five or six because those buildings have not been approved. So, and I'm speaking specifically to the parking. I'm not so sure that the bar has been raised high enough to convince me that the applicant has put in a worthy enough argument to reverse my decision on the parking lot. Although I can be persuaded by my fellow board members, which is why we're all here tonight. Additionally, Lorraine Drive, there's still residents on Lorraine Drive. With the testimony from the applicant, it's going to cost him $15,000 for the sidewalk that would service that street with the residents that currently live on there. It would cost him $16,000 for one parking spot. I would contend also that Lorraine Drive will actually be used for parking. That's going to be a lot closer than the parking lot will be at Vercusi. So if you're going to be walking over to building five, you're going to be parking on Lorraine. We need access for those people or we're just sending them right on onto the road. And you guys know how much I like to put traffic and people together. I'm not so sure for the health and safety of our community that eliminating a sidewalk is, is in the best interest of the citizens, especially the people that live currently at 70, 80, and 90. You know, they're going to be living in a construction zone. So for those reasons, right now, I'm not sure that the bar for me has not been raised high enough to reconsider a vote on the original ruling and amend it with the new information that I've been brought. Actually, what has been brought to me is showing me that there is a need for less parking.
So I can make a couple of comments and I.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
That's why, I think it's.
That's why we're here.
We all have different opinions on the board. I, I believe the applicant has brought quite a bit of information that we didn't have the last time. That I do believe that he has justified needing the parking, but I also believe when I go by I-Square at night, okay, and I see the parking lot full, I see to me what is, and this is personal feelings, okay? There's life going on in the center of town. Having said that, I believe the applicant has provided enough information that says if he's going to spend $350,000 and it's almost $17,000 a parking spot, I believe he's provided enough justification for me to pass the parking lot. So that's how I feel on the parking. That's why I was asking if there was more information that was needed. And I think the icing on the cake to me was when I read the libella from our town engineer that the calculations and the reasoning was valid for the traffic and so forth. So I felt really good about the parking. Having said that, I think you do bring up a valid point about the sidewalk. It's, it's not clear to me that I've heard anything except a cost at this point in time that would change my mind that the parking lot or the sidewalk would be a good idea on Lorraine Drive. And I think you brought up some very good use cases. But we are a board and everybody feels slightly different, so I think it's worthwhile everybody express if, you know, their comments. You don't have to express your comments. But if anybody else has any other comments before we entertain a motion, I just wanted to.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with you on the parking lot. I think that Mr. Nolan and the I-Square team would certainly not be constructing parking that they didn't need. I have also seen the parking lot pretty jam-packed numerous times. I think the additional parking information that was provided tonight, I think, was very suitable for, for me on that parking lot. I, I don't love the reduced green space thing that we discussed, but I, I do feel pretty confident in the need for the parking. I also will echo the sidewalk comments though that, you know, I think that the comment last time was also that if we don't, if we don't get it now and, and, and make it, I understand it's a section of sidewalk that will go to nowhere and then there's a gap and so on, but, you know, this is the opportunity to do it and that hopefully it will get connected in the future. I think it does promote, you know, a walkable area. I think there will be street parking, et cetera, so. At the very least, I would, if there's some sort of way to allow a, you know, future installation of that or something, if that was something the board was interested in, I would probably be fine with that as well. As long as there was a means to do it, where I'm afraid now, there just is no way that that could be installed. So I'm, I'm kind of feeling like the sidewalk still needs to be there.
Any other comments, Mr. Plin?
I, I liked what Ms. Burns brought up, and I'm not certain I understood it correctly, but the relationship to the sidewalk where there was a proposal by her that it could be something that the town would encumber as it looks ahead to its sidewalk buildup plan. If I could have a clarification from, from, if you could help me, Gary?
In terms of the, the?
If I, if I understood Ms. Burns correctly, she was certainly in favor of the sidewalk and threw in there a little bit of a caveat that said there was perhaps town funds for that?
So that would be something that I would actually have to, the Commissioner of Public Works is the one who manages or oversees our capital improvement program budgeting. And in that budget, we typically identify funds for public infrastructure. Oftentimes, it's repair and replacement of existing. There have been instances where funds have been available to consider potential installation of sidewalks. And so that's something that does get looked at from time to time. And as either petition comes from property owners or neighborhoods, we've seen that happen in the past where neighborhoods have approached the town board with the request for that type of an improvement.
We kind of consider I-Square our park. I hope the town would too.
So that, to the extent that Lorraine Drive is a public right-of-way, it's a potential. I could not commit the town to, to indicate that that would or could happen in the future. It's just, it's from a, from a technical standpoint, it's a public right-of-way. But to, in terms of practical, whether that would be a viable option in the future, I'm not really, I don't know that I can answer that question definitively.
Thank you.
And Michael, I think my, my comment with, you know, if, if that were to happen, the parking lot would still need to shift slightly and maybe a couple of spots would have to get lost out of that area in order to accommodate that in the future. And it, yeah, right. And, and at which point down the road, if there was any future development or anything that the sidewalk would fully connect, could we not then make that part of that at that time to put it on this lot as well or not? Do you want me to restate that, Rob?
Yeah, you could, but you would also need to consider on balance the parking needs at that time, right? And if, if you were eliminating spaces or having an impact on parking, that's, that's something you need to balance too.
Well, I'm saying that that would have to be eliminated now because it's the only way that the sidewalk could potentially be put in in the future. I was trying to not have the applicant incur the cost today because I do agree with him that at the moment, it won't go anywhere. I understand that and I'm trying to be sympathetic to that.
So then, could you advance the proposals of the board that would suggest that the sidewalk be constructed contemporaneous with the construction of a building? And can you articulate which building potentially might be benefited by the sidewalk? That would be reasonable.
I, I guess I was thinking at what, at which time the sidewalk could be connected to where it currently terminates at, at 7:45, between 7:45 and 93. But, but making it so that it could be installed in the future by shifting the parking back, which may require the applicant to lose a couple of parking spaces out of that lot.
So I think if I can just add, the, the part that Ellen brought up is that people are going to still park on Lorraine Drive. I think it makes it more safe.
But they, they currently don't have any connectivity between the sidewalk that we would be, if I'm understanding this correct, that we would be requiring on lots 61, 71, and 81 because then there's a gap across 93? Right. Rob, this is, this is just a process question. If 93 is not included in this, can, can we make any decisions on that in any way, shape, or form when it comes to a sidewalk?
No, but it can inform your decision based on the sidewalk adjacent to it. One way or the other. It can influence a positive or negative decision based on the fact that it wasn't included.
Sure. And then, and then speculatively, if 93 were to come up in the future and the sidewalk was extended, 81 was not included in that part of that project, could we extend it then onto 81? I think that's the question Spencer's asking.
81 is included in the project.
In this project, but 93 is not.
Right. But 51, we could actually extend it there. That is in control of the applicant's.
Yeah, I'm not talking about 51.
No. But here's what I'm saying to you guys. At this moment, those parcels are in control of the applicant. The condition is that they put a sidewalk in there. He's asking you to remove that. You've been presented with enough information that that's no longer necessary is what you're trying to tell us.
No, I don't think that's what I said at all. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping the sidewalk. I was trying to come up with a means to allow the future construction of it. It was just, it was an idea that I floated. I mean, you can certainly not agree with that. I was just trying to.
But the construction is going to happen on this parking lot anyway. You might as well put the sidewalk in at the same time. It's going to be cheaper for him in the long run. He's already got the equipment there. He's already got the equipment there. I I think that we need that sidewalk for safety. It's a start. It's not going to be the end of it. I think that as we look toward future plans, we're going to need a sidewalk over there. I mean, we can't ask those people to park on Lorraine Drive, then walk in the middle of the road to get to their location. And then the other thing is, we have to assume that there's never going to be anything on Lorraine Drive. I mean, we're talking to a sidewalk that goes to nowhere. That means we're going to have houses that were ripped down and just foundations there? I don't believe that that's going to be the case. I don't believe that the Nolans would allow that to happen, and I believe that that will actually be developed into something. And if somebody from those cottages walks up that private drive onto Lorraine Drive or Lorraine, they're going to need someplace to walk if they're heading north.
I live on a, I live on a street with.
Yep.
With Jason Streets. None of us have sidewalks.
Yep.
Haven't found a need for one yet.
I can tell you, I live in a street that does have sidewalks, and when we moved here, we made sure that we moved into a neighborhood with sidewalks. We didn't consider a place without sidewalks.
Yeah, I think it is in the master plan that we're trying to provide a more walkable sidewalk.
In the master plan, or in the Muck Guidelines, it says, what does it say? Pedestrian walkways from buildings to parking areas with extension of such walkways through parking areas to adjacent streets and buildings are requested. That's two thirty-five dash thirty-one-one.
It's a good line. Thank you.
Can I answer the applicant a question?
Not at this point.
Huh?
Not, I don't believe at this point. Let me double check. Yeah, I mean, if if there's.
It's pertaining to sidewalks.
If there's a reason that you find it necessary to ask them a question, you can do that, but we're during deliberations and it's discouraged. You can certainly do it, though.
I recall that there was no sidewalks on that road to begin with, right?
That is correct. There has never been sidewalks.
So people have been walking down the street all this time and been unsafe.
For the eleven houses that were prior there, there was not. We are not opposed to sidewalks. We've installed nearly twenty thousand square feet of sidewalks throughout the I Square Development. We've put them where they make sense. This position clearly does not have any value for parking.
Thank you.
Mary, I also want to point out that there was never a parking lot on this street either.
Staff moving from the parking lot to a place of work. I I also, I don't see staff or over or if there's overflow parking, I don't see them leaving that parking lot on Lorraine Drive, then heading out of the way, which would be south, to go down the private road, down a hill, through a valley, and back up a hill to get to the brewery. When I stood there this afternoon and stood in that parking lot and imagined that I was going to go to the brewery, the most direct route seemed to me to go to Titus Avenue and make a right was also was shorter and it was flat.
So any other, Mary, I'm sorry, any other comments or discussion? So I would like to ask the council a question. Can we address these one off instead of one motion for both?
You should, you could address them individually, and you could do separate motions as to each particular thing. It may be easier, though, to to consider them together in in light of the testimony that was presented and the materials that were provided, but if the board finds it's necessary to consider them individually, you certainly can. The thing I want to remind you all again is the standard that you're to apply, furthering the health, safety, and welfare interests on balance compared to what the applicant's interests are. And these conditions were discussed previously, and there was rationale for each of these conditions at that time. So you need to balance that in in light of the additional information that was provided to you tonight and make a determination as to whether or not they're still appropriate in light of that information.
In terms of the sidewalk, what additional information was provided tonight that wasn't provided? I the thing, the justification that I heard was that it doesn't make sense and that people would leave the parking lot and go down the private drive. That was the same rationale that I think I heard the last time. Was there something that I was, was there another piece of evidence that was submitted this time that was not talked about the last time?
I'm not aware of any, but can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? Maybe we would just do a straw poll vote on the issues just to see where we're at, if we're at some place, to start heading toward a motion on some of this.
I'm all for moving this forward, so let's discuss the parking, I guess, from a straw vote. Do you have enough information and Mr. Evelyn?
I most certainly do.
And you want me to do a straw vote at this point in time? Do you want me, is that fair, counsel?
Yeah, you can certainly do that. But again, if if you're going to do a vote, folks should articulate rationale for the reason why they're they're moving in one direction versus the other and the information that they saw this evening that they might not have had in the past on balance compared to the entirety of the site plan that you've all discussed several times now.
I I would vote in favor of revising the site plan to allow the twenty-one space parking lot on the corner of Titus Avenue and Baker's Park. The information presented tonight, as well as the sidewalk I took earlier this afternoon, I got out, I saw more information, some of my questions and concerns were answered. Mr. Nolan has convinced me and conveyed to me that he does, in fact, have a need for parking. Whether that need for parking is current and immediate, which he says that it is, or if it's to facilitate the build-out of the rest of the actual structures, I'm comfortable with that. He has, he has articulated to me and and through his testimony and and statements that he is not going to tow anyone that has parked there for neighboring businesses until it becomes a detriment to his business, and I can, I can, that's acceptable. I'm making my decision based on that.
And the sidewalk?
And the sidewalk, I am still for the sidewalk for the the, I I, after walking up and down that street today, it's just something that that it already runs halfway there. And I understand that 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 there's different opinions here and that and that's okay. As as I was standing out on that site today, and I did the same thing Brad did, I stood on the corner of where the parking lot was proposed, and I looked up Lorraine and thought, would I walk up Lorraine, if there was a sidewalk here, take a right on Titus to go to the brewery? My main concern is the brewery, clearly. Or would I walk through the development? And as I stated earlier, I'd love to see what it looks like, but if I was trying to take a direct route, I would walk up Lorraine and take a right on Titus. So I would vote to not make any revisions to our condition for the sidewalk.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
I I I feel very comfortable that the twenty-one car parking lot could be installed, can can that can be modified or revised. I think based on the kind of parking information, the calcs that were verbally discussed tonight, I felt much more clarity in in those, as well as the letter from the town engineer. So I would support revising that. I echo Mr. Evelyn's comments on the sidewalk. One of the major items to me is I do think that there will be street parking on Lorraine, especially when the brewery is operating and the retail is operating as well, and and even more so than the, you know, employee parking lot. I see street parking and people parking there really using that in the future. So I I believe the sidewalk needs to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
I'm good on the sidewalk and.
I'm good on the sidewalk.
To.
Remain?
I'm still not convinced. It doesn't mean I'm not going to vote with the majority if we go this way, that we've been given enough information to to reverse or to, I'm sorry, to amend the decision that was made a month ago. I also believe that it is in the public interest to have that green space in the front. I'm a little disappointed to hear that it's now been encroached upon a little bit more than what we thought it was going to be encroached upon on the original approval. That being said, if we do lose that, I think that some revisions will happen to Building Five that will probably make up for that.
Okay. Is there any other information regarding parking that you're looking for that we don't have?
No, I I don't think that the numbers balance at this moment. Once the full build-out's done, the numbers will balance a little better, but for me, the numbers aren't balancing.
Okay.
So I think I stated my position earlier, which was very similar to Mr. Reed's. I guess I will share a personal experience. I did live in a mixed-use commercial two years ago, and I'm someone that's very much for green space. However, in the mixed-use commercial I was in, there was no green space. It was very urban. So there are differences in the mixed-use commercial, I believe. So from personal experience, that's why they had dog parks, things of that nature within the facilities. So maybe something will come out when they build the residential. However, I'm still leaning towards, I think I got enough information to support the parking lot, but I have not heard enough to say that the sidewalk's not a good idea, so I think that should remain. Mr. Plam?
I support both the sidewalk and the parking as is. Parking as is, sidewalk to build.
Parking.
Parking as proposed, you know, not amend.
Not amend, keep it as green space?
No, keep it as as it was originally.
As originally, so you go back to a parking lot?
Twenty-one parking spots.
So you're you're in favor of a parking lot on the corner of Baker and Titus?
Thank you.
And the sidewalk?
Sidewalks, let's do sidewalks.
Okay. Ms. Hallmark?
I'm for the twenty-one parking, and I'm saying no to the sidewalk.
I'm against the parking because I think that this parking lot is not of a similar scale, design, and function of the pre-existing pe, of the pre-existing use, which was a pizza shop or the earlier conceptual plan. I think that putting the parking lot there will change the ratio of street width to building height. I think that putting the parking lot there will moderately or significantly change the visual character of the area. I think that the new parking lot design layout is in contrast to that which was existed before and was in the conceptual plan. I think the project is of a larger scale than currently exists in the area, considering parking. I think that the parking lot is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character of the area along Titus Avenue. I think that green space is needed for the apartments and cottages. I think that some type of agreement to allow businesses in the area to use that parking lot in perpetuity needs to be enforced as that's more in line with the Muck Guidelines, which want to create a environment geared to the pedestrian, want to create a gathering space for appropriate outdoor activities, and further enhance green space along the street. I think that we should be meeting parking requirements by the use of shared, off-site parking, adjacent parking, onsite parking, and a combination of three, with onsite parking being the least preferred, as said in the guidelines of Muck. I think that we need to provide for large pedestrian spaces and greens areas and open plazas. I think that instead of putting a parking lot there, we need to orient buildings toward the main street, and I think that we need to locate buildings as close to Titus and Cooper as possible, as outlined in the Muck Guidelines. So for those reasons, I am against placing the parking lot at the corner of Titus and Cooper. As for the sidewalk, I'm in favor of keeping the sidewalk there because the Muck Guidelines ask for pedestrian walkways from buildings to parking areas, and that that as part of site plan review, we're supposed to look for a direct nexus with Muck Guidelines.
Okay, so hearing that, unless somebody objects, I'd like, can I make the motion? I know, okay. So I'm going to make the motion regarding case number PB one eight zero four dash one upon the matter of request by I Square LLC for amendment to revise site plan approval associated with the I Square Development located on premises four hundred and four oh one Baker's Park, six six seven, seven seven five, and seven nine five Titus Avenue, and fifty, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-one, seventy-one, eighty-one Lorraine Drive in a mixed-use commercial district. My motion is to amend our previous ruling and allow the parking lot on the corner of Baker and Titus as was proposed in the July, I got to get the exact date.
Was it the at the as proposed on the March twelfth, twenty eighteen?
That was the March twelfth where we took it away.
Yep, that was the, that was the, where you, that was the meeting where the condition was imposed, and so the amendment is to that decision.
It's to that decision. So the all the other decisions remain in place?
Correct, and now, and Rubble, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but you're modifying the site plan approval that was issued at the March twelfth, twenty eighteen meeting, and you're.
I want to take that off the table.
You're lifting, you're lifting that particular condition.
And it goes back to having the the green space and the wall on the previous one?
It goes back to as as presented or proposed by the applicant on the March twelfth C two drawing, and hopefully I'm.
Do I need to make that a condition, or is that just automatically happened?
No, you would, you would say that you are in favor, based on the additional materials and testimony presented, in favor of allowing the applicant to construct the parking lot as shown on and then reference the drawing that Kerry mentioned, March twelfth, twenty eighteen, sheet C two prepared by TYLON International.
Okay, so I would like to amend our previous ruling from three twelve eighteen on the TYLON drawing C two and allow the parking lot on the corner of Titus and Cooper. And I don't have to make any reference, it just automatically goes back to the previous?
Can Bernie?
Baker, I'm sorry, Baker and Titus. Sorry, I almost did that again.
Can we, I think, I think where Bernie was going, and I think it's appropriate because the drawing dated March twelfth doesn't actually call out the screening wall. So I I I'm pretty sure that that's what we've been talking about all night, but this drawing does not say that.
That's what I was trying to.
I apologize, so, yes, so I apologize. So you're, the approval that you're amending is, was the one that was issued on the twelfth of March twenty eighteen. The physical design of the area.
Was the July meeting.
Was at the July twenty seventeen, July thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Yep.
So that the landscaping and design elements.
However, the applicant is proposing to change the layout of that.
As presented by the applicant.
Correct.
Try saying that three times.
That's why I think, I think Bernie's point of saying he's, we're going back to the three twelve eighteen, but I think we just need to say, and shall include the screening wall and landscaping previously.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Correct.
That should be expressly in there, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so we said a lot, but I want to make sure we got it absolutely correct. So in regards to case number PB one eight zero four dash one, upon the matter of request by I Square LLC for amendment to revise site plan approval associated with the I Square Development located on premises four hundred, four oh one Baker's Park, six six seven, seven seven five, and seven ninety-five Titus Avenue, and fifty, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-one, seventy-one, eighty-one Lorraine Drive in a mixed-use commercial district, that we amend our three twelve eighteen ruling?
Decision.
Decision.
Decision approving.
Approving.
The revised site plan.
The revised site plan.
Based on the additional information and testimony presented by the applicant.
Based on the additional information provided by the applicant, but reverts to the landscaping and screening wall from the July thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. and screening wall from the July 31, 2017 decision.
Correct.
And authorizes the construction of 21 parking spaces as shown on the March 12, 2018 plan.
And as the attorney just stated. In addition, I recommend that we, it's part of this motion, I recommend that we deny the amendment to the sidewalk, and the sidewalk remains.
I would suggest alternative language, that just say, a sidewalk be constructed in accordance with the revised site plan approval granted on, and then whatever the date of the meeting was.
So isn't it basically that we're denying the amendment?
It's just, it's cleaner to just say that the sidewalk be constructed in accordance with the.
Okay, in addition, the sidewalk be constructed in accordance with the March 1218 decision on Lorraine Drive, or parcels, give me the parcels correct. I want to make sure I have that correct. So the parcels on Lorraine Drive are, can I get clarification from staff?
They are.
Why aren't we doing it as we did it before?
Yep, you know what, it was, oh, he went, they went.
You don't even need to list the parcels.
No, you don't, because it's just. So the sidewalk be constructed.
In accordance.
In accordance with the, this, March 12. Revised site plan approval from March 12.
Yep.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
I'll even second it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Evelyn, and I'd like to do a roll call on that, please. Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Aye or nay?
He said aye.
Gave you an aye.
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 I'll come back.
You'll come back? I'm an aye, Mr. Palermo?
Aye.
Nay.
I'll vote aye.
With that, it passes as stated. Hold on one second.
Time to go.
Um.
I don't have permission to stay out later than this.
One, one more point I want to make. You don't need to make that one.
Yeah, we already said that in the introductory.
Okay. With that, I'd like to have.
Mark's in the calls.
Second, reading's adjourned.
Thank you.